Since we're, uh, since we're all, since we're all here now, we can get started. Beer board meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Councilmember Dan.
Here.
Councilmember Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilmember Manus.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated June 26, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any old business before us? Under new business, we have a request from Aubrey Burleson of Aubrey's Inc., um, with Universal Pizza Company, for a Class C onsite beer permit located at 2226 North Charles G. Seavers Boulevard in Clinton. I don't know what you put Clinton for. I'd say we represent. I just read what's written on there. Um, is anybody here from Aubrey's? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Aubrey Burleson, 5800 Woodburn Drive, Knoxville.
And what are you requesting? And can you give us some details and just tell us about your store and opening and all that good stuff?
We, we've been looking in Clinton for quite some time. We were wanting to open up in Aubrey's and couldn't find a site. So we decided to open up a little, something a little smaller. Uh, we call it Universal Pizza Company. It is the original name of what was Barley's Pizza over in Asheville, North Carolina, before they changed it to Barley's. We own the Barley's in Knoxville and in Maryville and, uh, since changed the one in Maryville to the Blue Tick Tavern. So we're looking at that crust, a little bit smaller footprint, more, uh, family driven than what we have done in the past. And we're real excited about a new project, especially here in Clinton.
What's your, what's your menu going to look like?
Uh, the menu will look a lot like, it will be 50% pizza and, uh, other sandwiches and pastas after that. So if you had to do a quick, uh, snapshot, the Blue Tick Tavern pizza, the menu in Maryville would be the one we're going to model it after.
Okay. But so this is the first Universal Pizza.
Yes, sir. It was the original name of the pizza in Asheville before they merged it with Barley's. And so it's a little homage to, you know, going back to a name that this pizza is, uh, known for. So we're excited about it.
What's your opening date?
We are looking sometime after the first of the year. Obviously, when we have so many managers, they want to get through the holidays and spend time with their families. They don't want to be opening up a new restaurant. So we're hopefully sometime into January 1st or February.
Great.
And all the managers are super excited to come to Clinton. That's one of those, it's a first for us, I have to say. I don't have to talk anybody into this job.
Well, you look at the, all the restaurants and stuff you have around you, um, you know, we like to eat. So that's a southern thing, I guess.
We, we appreciate all of you, that's for sure.
So back to your beer, um, um, request license. So what process do you have with your employees as far as checking IDs? You have anything on the computer that double checks it or?
It's all company policy. We only serve 21 and up. Uh, obviously that takes a lot of development and training of our people. So we're having to, our policies to card everyone. So therefore, um, you know, every now and then it gets you into a little bit of a conflict with somebody who doesn't want to give up an ID, but, um, we understand it is a privilege to serve and not a right to serve. And so therefore we try to, uh, respect everything that goes along with serving beer. The restaurant's going to have 36 taps and it will mostly just be, um, it's a small dining room. We're not looking for a large beer crowd or, you know, any, no, no live music or anything like that.
Is some of that going to be craft or is it going to be domestic or?
Um, at this time in life, uh, I think we all know the domestics sell better, but the beer gods who are ma, our managers consider themselves, they like a little craft. So it will be a good mix, sir.
Good, good. Well, speaking for the city, we're very excited about having you. Trust me, we're, we really are.
Excited.
I hope that leads to more things too in the future for you guys. So any more questions since I've asked them all? So I'm a little excited, I guess, start, start talking. Plus I haven't eaten yet. Your motion for, for approval?
So moved, second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes, sir. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Any other business? Hear a motion to adjourn the beer board, uh, meeting?
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Opening up a regular, regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Queener.
Here.
Councilmember McBride.
Here.
Councilmember Harold.
Here.
Councilmember Dan.
Here.
Councilmember Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilmember Manus.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved, second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Um, I'd like to have a mo, a moment of silence for a few people. And it's just, I know there's people that I'm not going to recognize or, or know, but a lot of people that, that need our prayers and our thoughts. Uh, please be thanking them also. Um, do you want to say, we want to have a moment of silence with Norma Fraker? Passed away last week. Um, J. Paul Sanderson just died this afternoon, passed away. And people that have been ill or in the hospital or, or seeking treatment, um, I know of is Chief Melton. He's a good man. And also another good man is Joe, Dr. Joe Rainey. Uh, so please just, let's give a moment of silence. And again, um, Councilman McBride will lead us in prayer. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to serve you and to serve this city. Father, we pray for these that have mentioned, uh, the Fraker family and Sanderson family. And also, Father, we think of the Rainys, uh, and also Chief Melton and the people who are caring for them and tending to them. I pray a special blessing for them. I pray now that you would be with us as we conduct the business of the city. I thank you for the city of Clinton and the, the fact that I live here and my family lives here. I thank you for that. I pray for each of the employees and the managers and administration and what they do each and every day. I pray for protection upon them and for wisdom. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Also one of, um, our thoughts and prayers also to Freddie Fagan. He's got a big week this week. He's going, has some challenges and, um, hopefully everything works out for him too. I know we all know him and love him. Hear a motion for the review and the approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated October 23rd, 2023. This is a city council's regular meeting and also approval of the special call meeting on November 15th, 2023.
So moved, second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Double, double.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This time we'll recognize visitors as citizens, um, to come to the podium. Just state your name and address. We just ask you to take three minutes, please. We'll turn off the mic. I'm joking.
I've written it down because I was a little nervous. Um, good evening, Mayor, City Council, members and staff. My name is Delaney Davis.
Do you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Delaney Davis, 1004 Fowler Street.
Okay.
Um, my name is Delaney Davis and with the exception of my time in the Army, I've been a resident of Anderson County my entire life. I'm here tonight about my chickens. Seven months ago, my four-year-old son and I were gifted four small chicks. With grocery prices up, I saw this as a wonderful opportunity to teach myself and my son to raise our own food and fertilize the garden. The very week that my chickens finally started laying eggs, the animal control officer informed me I'd have to get rid of them because I didn't have three acres. During our signature collecting for our petition, I found out no one is really aware of the city ordinance. As a matter of fact, most people thought you could have five hens. So I've set out to see if we can remedy our town laws to reflect what other cities in our county have adapted and been successful with. Thank you all again for your time and your service.
Thank you.
And I have a petition here.
Um, you may want to give that to Chris. I mean, he's a good person. Okay. Does, will she need to come to plan and commission or ask that be, that be put on the agenda?
Probably could send a request, yeah, that, that we put on the planning commission agenda.
Does she have time? Matt, she can do it this for, for December, can't she?
She should be. We haven't changed the timeframe yet for submitting.
Can she do that by email or she just need to come by and talk to you?
There's an application online that you can get to.
If you want to do it that way or you can, when you come in the doors right to the right, that's the code and zoning. You can go in there and ask for that and, and I think at that time you can request to be put on the agenda. They can take care of that.
Okay. In the meantime, um, can I get a hall pass for my chickens or? Is that a thing?
This, this is Matt Widener. That's, that's.
They just started laying eggs. So the board work, I'd be happy to bring them to the whole council.
Come on, Scrooge. Come on, man. Come on, man.
For a dozen eggs.
For a dozen eggs.
I know Curtis is going to be coming back around.
Come by and talk. I think we need to have some real good discussion on the hens. Um, I mean, there's a lot of cities around us that are doing it. I think some, you know, it's four to six. And I haven't heard, only negative I heard from Matt, he was, he was in Oak Ridge, that, uh, a stray rooster may come by. And then you got to get rid of the rooster or ta, remove him. But, um, they don't make any noise and they produce food and I don't think it's a bad thing. But we, certainly, certainly something we, we want to look at. But thanks for coming. You did a great job, by the way. Anyone else? State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Estle and I live at 116 Pioneer Drive. I wanted to talk about chickens too. Um, I have a 22-year-old son who started raising chickens when he was five years old. I can say nothing good, except good about chickens. Um, all my kids are raising chickens now. They're learning life skills that they cannot learn in pu, public school, i, if they went to public school. Um, they are learning entrepreneurship. Um, they raise their own chickens. They sell their chickens. They sell their eggs. They raise all sorts of different animals. We're originally from Ca, California, um, where my oldest son raised every animal that you can raise. Um, and he sold it. And he paid for his entire four years of college by raising animals and, and selling animals. He was state champion in two, two of the animals in Ca, California. My kids now, I have an autistic son. He will show chickens. That's the only thing he's interested in is showing his chickens. So he, he will take his chickens or he'll show his chickens. He'll do all that stuff. I believe that kids now with so much stuff coming out of the schools that, um, raising chickens helps. With the price of eggs going up, with the price of meat going up, we have raised our own chickens and, um, we call it, um, um, we, uh, farm birds because I not, we not only raise them for eggs, we also raise them for, for meat. Um, I've raised pigs for meat. We raise cows for meat. Um, we do, do it all. Here, I can't do all those, all those other, um, animals. But I think that it is so important for kids to learn that their eggs do not come from Walmart. Their eggs do not come from Food City or Kroger or anything else. They're, they, kids need to know how meat is raised. And they even, um, take care of the chickens. Every week they, they have a turn to, to take care of the chickens. They feed the chickens. They water the chickens. They collect the eggs. They, they learn, they learn, learn all that stuff. So I think we should be able to keep, keep the chickens, so.
Thank you. I'd recommend, when we have a date set on planning commission, that it'd be good to, to share that.
Okay.
Both you and Delaney do that. Anyone else? Any more chicken fans?
I wrote a whole lawsuit.
Who's in, who's in favor for chickens? Raise your hands. And you're good. Okay. That's all we need to hear. This side's not, but this, I know Ron, you're not going to support that. This side is. That's great. Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Fagan, let me recognize Dwayne Emmert, former colleague of mine at Clinton High School. I don't, don't know where on the, uh, agenda we want to put him, but it's probably a good time for him to make an announcement.
Oh, sure.
Promotion. So I'll gi, I'll give him a preview here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fagan. I, I voted with the chickens.
But that, I'm, I'm here to promote an event that's going to take place December the 7th. It's going to be at Clinton High School and it is a former student who graduated in 1994 from Clinton High School. His name's Dr. Derek Black. I knew him as Derek Black in Senior English. And he is coming to talk about a book that he has written that, and he is an advocate of public education. It is called Public Education and the Assault on American Democracy. And it is being sponsored by the Retired Teachers Associations of East Tennessee, and I am the president-elect. And so I have flyers and I've worked pretty hard on this event. I'd love for you to come. I would love for everybody in this room to come. And it's called A Celebration of Public Education. And he's going to talk about his time at Clinton High School, how he was a marginalized student who felt that public education saved him. As a matter of fact, his dedication in the book reads, um, "For the public school teachers of Clinton, Tennessee, who made good on the promise of opportunity for all." And that means a lot to me as a former teacher and to the teachers in Anderson County. And I hope this event is well received and well attended. I have flyers that I'll, can leave on the table for anybody that would like to have those.
Mr. Emmert, what time was that?
It will be at 5 o'clock and there is a reception following his presentation.
Was it at the auditorium?
It's in the Little Theater at Clinton High School.
December 7th?
December 7th.
December the 7th. That's a Thursday.
I might just add, I didn't know Mr. Emmert's going to be here, so I pulled up some bio information. He's written about forever, about every educational journal around. He's been in about every newspaper of any magnitude. He's had, uh, excerpts of some of his documents placed before, in, in the Supreme Court of the United States arguments and such. He is currently professor of law at the University of South Carolina. And he started his teaching career at Harvard School of Law. So it's another Clinton guy that's done pretty damn good.
Absolutely. And this is just another feather in.
Tim Birchfield, pretty damn good.
Feather in Anderson County and Clinton's cap, I think. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Emmert.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Communications from the mayor. I have a couple of things. Um, we have a tree lighting at the community center at 6 o'clock. That's December 1st. Um, again, it's at the community center. I have a chili cook-off at 5 o'clock. How much does that cost to get a bowl of chili, JB? Thank you. Sorry, I just threw that out there. I was just wondering. So, um, also December 2nd is our Christmas parade on Mark Street in Maine. Um, that, again, that's Friday. This, this coming up, I'm sorry, this is coming up Saturday. And John Gamble is going to be our grand marshal. Good man. That's well deserved, um, recognition there. Also, I do have a board appointee. I'd like to, um, feel Ashley Purdy, uh, was on Community Action Commission. And she's been, she's been gone for a while. Um, I would like to, um, appoint Lenika Bounds. And her term will end December 31st, 2024. Like, hear a motion for approval, please.
So moved, second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And that's all I have. Moving on to community reports. City School Board report. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. If E.T. Stamy were here tonight, I know exactly what he would be thinking. He would be thinking that we have a new Blaze well-rounded activity called Blaze Chickens. And so we're going to have to investigate and see if he can do fundraising and we can start Blaze well-rounded chickens.
Tell us how many days away we are from the fair.
Oh, I got that today. I think it was 217 if I remember correctly. But I got that this morning from him. Um, our, our North Clinton playground is scheduled to be installed hopefully next week. We've gotten the old one torn down and it's, it's leveled. And so we're hoping to begin that next week. Um, we're also starting our mid, um, mid, uh, year benchmarking. So we'll have all of our, uh, mid-year benchmarking done by Christmas. So we can see where we are in terms of academic achievement. And then I wanted to spend the rest of the time just telling you about three things that are kind of on our radar statewide that you might hear a little bit about. Um, the first thing is that letter grades for schools, we've been talking about this since 2017. Um, but letter grades for individual schools will be released for the first time in December. Um, a little history behind that, um, in 2017 was supposed to be the first year that they were released. And we spent two years, um, under Commissioner McQueen putting together the formula for what we thought would be a fair representation, um, to take the complex and multi-dimensional work that we do inside schools and try to equate it to one single letter grade. It was never a good idea, but we thought we had gotten a formula that was, that was fair to, you know, all the variety of schools across the, um, state. For various reasons, due to testing flaws and then COVID happened. And so letter grades were, um, delayed. And, um, we have a new commissioner, Commissioner Reynolds, who, um, announced to us that even though that formula has been in place since 2017 and has yet to be implemented so the public can decide if they like that or not. Um, when they ran the report, there was too many As and that did not make them happy. And so they have reworked the formula. And, um, so they spent two, the past two or three months reworking that formula, which is not quite as fair. I think when letter grades come out, it's going to be a very, very big divide between poverty schools and, um, high socioeconomic schools because they placed a large emphasis on the absolute achievement. Whereas the former letter grade had some different pathways. So, um, I'm going to, before the grades are announced, I want to announce what we would have been if the regular formula that had been in place had remained, which was actually built by stakeholders and not by, by bureaucracy. Um, we would have had, Clinton Elementary would have had an A. South Clinton Elementary would have had an A. And North Clinton Elementary would have had a B. And given the fact of the dynamics of each one of those schools, that's something to be very, very proud of. Um, under the old system, Clinton Elementary would have been a reward school and South Clinton would have been a reward school. And so our schools continue to do exceedingly well. But when the letter grades come out, it's not that our children have performed any worse or that our teachers haven't provided an excellent education for our kids. It's that the formula was changed, in my opinion, to tell a narrative that they want to tell to continue their privatization. But, um, I want us to be very, very, um, I want it to be well-known that we are As and Bs and that we had two out of three reward schools before those letter grades come out. So the letter grade is so convoluted at this point with how they will do us being a K through six school that we can't really, we've not even been given the data or the metrics for how this letter grade is going to come out. We've been given the formula, but not the specific metrics for achievement of what will be an A, what will be a B. So just lots of confusion there, but we'll continue to keep you updated. Um, the second thing I want to put on your radar is the discussion that is happening with federal funds. You may have seen in the newspaper, um, that there is a working group of which Representative Reagan is a member of, discussing whether we want to withhold federal funds. And just to put into context with ESAR funds, we are getting about $1.8 million in Clinton City schools alone with federal funds this year that we would be turning back over and, and rejecting if this was approved. Now, we'll be losing a significant piece of that with the loss of ESAR. This is our last year with ESAR. But this federal funds does grant a lot of our, um, additional teaching assistance and a lot of our additional intervention. Um, and it also funds our free and reduced lunch program for the USDA. So lots of conversation is happening there. We have been informed by several key Senate members that they don't think that that would ever pass. So I'm not super worried about that. But if the conversations continue, it would take a hit. And once the state determines, if they say that, they say that they would replace it with state funds. But once that happens, they get determined how that's allocated or where that goes. And so we would not be guaranteed that we would get the same level of funding. So that conversation continues to happen and we continue to watch that. And then the last thing I want to put on your radar is with our third grade retention law. We talked a lot about that last year. And because we were living third grade retention law, we did not focus on the follow-up piece with that as much last year. But there is a piece in that law that states that if a child does not go to summer school and get 90% attendance or meet what they call adequate growth, that they have to make adequate growth in fourth grade. But adequate growth was never determined. And so the State Department has, still has not approved what adequate growth looks like. But we do have approximately 10 or 11 fourth grade students that fall into this category that will have to meet adequate growth. And so the State Board is supposed to approve a formula in January, um, as to what this adequate growth looks like. We have seen what they have proposed and it is very, very convoluted. It will be very difficult for parents to understand. Um, but the problem will be is that in law, there doesn't exist any pathways for promotion for these certain kids. So if they did not meet that adequate growth, which we would not know until at this point July, they would, they would be retained in fourth grade with no pathways for promotion. And so that will be heavily on our legislative agenda for this year, that we should be seeking solutions with intervention, not solutions with retention. So that will be something you hear us discuss a lot, um, in the legislative session. But I wanted to kind of put that on your radar just as parents. I think because we were so focused on third grade, we really weren't focused on this piece. But now it is affecting, um, several thousand kids across the, uh, state of Tennessee that will have to make that fourth grade adequate growth. So all great news for me today. Don't you feel so uplifted? Any questions for me?
Scott going to speak? I mean, he may put us over the edge.
Any questions for Kelly?
I, I got, so let me, let me ask you a question. So what's Reagan and, and his group, so what's, what's, what's their plan? If they turn away the funding, the federal funding? So what, how are they going to, how are they going to fill that gap?
The people, I'm not going to speak directly for Reagan. I don't want to put words in his mouth. But the people who are advocating that they really want this to happen, um, they're, they're, they're thinking that there is enough state funds that could provide the same amount of funding and then we would not have to follow certain federal laws in which they don't necessarily agree with.
And a lot of that funding goes to the, the meals, the, the free meal programs and things like that too?
USDA funds all of our free and reduced lunch meals for all of our children.
So what percentage of our students qualify for that?
Uh, currently about, uh, 55% when you, when you look at free and reduced across, across the district. Um, some schools have a higher percent, percentage than others. But, um, we heavily depend on that program, you know, to feed children. So what is being discussed is that they think they could cherry pick and pick some programs and not pick others. Um, but definitely the federal funding is, is needed, is, is greatly needed in our schools. So that is very concerning.
What can we do? I mean, can we, I mean, cause my fear is, is I'm not, with those federal funds comes, I'm sure lots of small print and red tape. I'm not sure I have enough confidence in them to read all the small print and red tape later on. I mean, would, I mean, if there are cities, I mean, not that our legislators would look at it, but is there any value to us passing a, is, would it be a resolution proclamation? What would we, what's the correct term that we would ask for them to, I mean?
Support.
Support it. I'm, I'm not, I don't have confidence in the group that's there right now.
Well, when you look at the, the, all the working groups are online. You could, you can see them on, on YouTube, on their channel. It is really disturbing, the questions that they are even asking. One of our elected officials, not in this area, wasn't even aware that federal funds weren't rolled into our TESA state funding plan. And so there's just not a, a deep knowledge of the purpose of federal funds, the necessity of, of federal funds, the consequences. They're going to happen if we don't accept federal funds. And so the working group has not made a recommendation at this point. So I think we'll have to wait.
Aren't they tasked to make a recommendation?
They are tasked to make a recommendation, yes.
So my point is, is there any value, if this body so desires to pass something, and again, we're just Clinton and Anderson County. Others would have to do it too. But at least we could let our legislators know that we.
I don't think.
I don't think, I, I don't think I support passing up federal funds, from what I've read, unless someone can teach me differently.
It would be a big, it would be a negative impact on us for sure. It is my understanding that what would have to happen is they would have to, someone would have to bring a bill and it would have to pass through General Assembly. So I think at that point, if a, if a bill becomes, you know, if we get word that a bill is doing, we would need to.
And if they should recommend it?
Yeah. Then I think we would need to do a resolution.
Vocal on the, on the backside of it.
Correct.
Okay.
And if you look at the state, they're saying they're falling short on funds this year. So.
And if they got all these.
But to go back to John Reagan.
Yeah.
He could care less what we think about it, being his constituents, because he doesn't pay any attention to what they think about it. There's three school systems in this county and he's not looking at anything, any of the three have said. So as far as having any confidence in him, I got a big zero.
And that's, that is the truth because I emailed him.
He's a waste of time and breathing air as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I mean, like what I'd like. Well, I mean, like what I'd like for us to say, I mean, I saw the superintendent, I think it was from Hawkins County, that if the state has extra money, which we've talked about that in, in recent years, maybe give some funding for some capital projects and bringing schools up. I mean, I don't think that's, I don't think that government and churches, neither one of those, I don't think should hoard money. I think they need to be good stewards of money, but I think local churches, I don't think you should, you know, be building on your bank account. Again, you need to have, need to be good stewards, but there's too many needs out there for government to do that.
We talked about early, last, last budget, Scott, we had a big push, all the cities about restoring the, the sales tax they take away from us. Give it back to us, and we can, we can use it.
I mean, and use it locally. And again, if we've got so much money left over, I, I thought, I think it was Hawkins County, the superintendent said, well, we've got all kinds of buildings, we could do some capital projects on. If you've got extra money, send us some money.
Buildings in need of repair, teacher salaries. There's ways that we could upgrade public education without, you know, withdrawing the federal, the federal, and we are the first state to ever even explore this. So there's lots of unanswered questions of what are even the consequences? And even the people in the working group, when the comptroller is questioned and other people are questioned, they don't know, because no one's ever explored this before.
That was, that was my question. Are we not the only state that's really seriously considering that?
Yes, we are, at this time.
What position is our state senator taking?
What is, what is his position? As in Lieutenant McNally? He's not on the working group.
Yeah, but.
I don't know his personal, yeah, I don't know his personal.
Well, if you can help us, maybe we can help you, let us know.
We will certainly keep you updated.
Kelly, another question on the third grader. So they, they got to go to the fourth grade, but they got to meet certain standards, but you all, I just want to make sure I understand it, you all don't know the standards they're supposed to meet.
That is correct.
And when will you find out the standards?
Not until state board meets in January. So you could potentially have a parent that did everything we asked them to do. They went to summer school. If they didn't make the adequate growth, we've provided them tutoring all this year. And then there is a possibility that we could look at them and not know the threshold of what they're being asked to do until January. But if they aren't able to achieve that, there is no pathway for them to go on to fifth grade. And I just want to be real clear that there is no research out there, number one, that is supportive of retention, but especially at an upper grade. If it's going to be done, it needs to be in kindergarten or first grade, not in fourth grade when they've established their peer grade.
And this is our state legislature as well on this issue?
This is. And both, yes, yes.
Interesting.
And that's already in place.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Well, keep fighting the fight. Again, we got your back.
Hey, that's why I was glad to see that we're having something positive with public education coming in Clinton. I'm excited about that.
I think the chickens are a lot easier, probably.
Scott, you didn't have anything?
I want a hall pass from state legislatures involved in that.
Moving on, Clinton, Clinton Regional Planning Report, Vice Mayor Gann.
It's hard to follow. The Board of Zoning and Appeals met on November the 13th. The only matter of business was that an applicant, the city of Clinton, requested a rear setback variance to 23 feet, left side setback to 13 feet for property located at 264 Highway Drive. This is the South Clinton Fire Station, and this was, variance was needed so that, for the addition of a, additional bay there for the truck, and this was passed. And then the Regional Planning Commission met on Monday, October 9th. Applicant Mary Hanson requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 250 Wellwood. Property's owned R1. All corrections were made, and this was approved. And then Alex Hamilton requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 318 Lee Road. And after corrections were made for this final plat, it was approved. The new business, there are, I don't know if I need to read all of that or not, there's seven amendments there. I can probably summarize. The first one, in fact, most of these early ones have to do with wording, changing some wording there. The majority of these deal with timeframes for submitting appropriate documents, giving our staff the, the ability to not be forced to hurry through evaluation of these, and also giving the submitters a chance to, a little bit longer to get their stuff together. So these are really just primarily bringing things up to date to modern times. We haven't had these updated for some time. The, about the only ones that don't deal with timeframes are a First Amendment proposal, which would add a new section as follows. Commercial and RV travel trailer parks developed as planned, unit development as regulated in, in Section 2.8. And then number two, modify zoning code, Section 6.2, permitted to use schedule to create a new use for RV travel trailer parks in the business and private services category to be permitted in B4 District only. The rest of those primarily are dealing with, with times for submission and approval by the, by the commission. Thanks to Matt for cleaning, cleaning up a lot of the verbiage there and trying to get it up to, to modern times.
Have any questions for Larry?
Also might mention there, I probably, I skipped over it because of the, the big part. In connection with the county, we had the, had to pass the Anderson County Text Amendment. This will permit planned developments in the A1 District, and recommendation is required from the Regional Planning Commission to the County Commission. So that was, in order to be able to accomplish that, we had to approve it, and we did.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Gann?
And again, thanks to Matt, we're cleaning up a lot of the verbiage and a lot of the, the things that should have been updated probably 10, 15 years ago.
Which way?
Twenty.
Thanks, thanks, Larry. CUB report?
CUB report is in your packet. Two things I'll say. CUB, you'll look and see that it's under budget for September. And if you think about it, and I say this over and over, we love, as consumers and people, we love low electric bills, but CUB is in the business of selling electricity. So when you look at the, the climate that we have had, it's not been a good electricity selling climate. It hasn't been real hot or real cold, so that affects CUB's bottom line, and that is reflected there. And then another thing that has been brought to my attention several times is CUB getting involved in internet and high-speed data. That was discussed at our last meeting, and rather than me just repeat that and get part of that wrong, I would urge anybody who has interest in that and want to know why CUB is not in the high-speed internet business, to look online at Clinton Utilities Board website, and you can go back and look at our meetings. And if you look at the end of that meeting, that will be discussed in a lot better technical detail than I can tell you, but dealing with cost and what it would take to get involved in that, it's a big expense on the front end, and then also CUB's relationship with Comcast could be jeopardized too. So again, just look at that meeting. If you have other questions, I'm sure I'll be happy to try to help you or get you answers. But that, that was a good explanation.
Any questions for Councilman McBride?
Thanks, Jim.
Other board and community reports. Mr. Gann, you had something about Green McAdoo?
I probably neglected to, to remind, to inform everybody about this. You may have seen it on Facebook. There are two panels that have been painted in the gym now. This has been done with grant money that Adam was able to get. If you haven't seen them, you need to go up and see them, or I think they're on Facebook and some other things. One of the panels is a panel of Green McAdoo, and I didn't realize there was a man named Green McAdoo, and it's a panel of him. The second panel is a panel of civil rights leaders, which includes Martin Luther King, Earl Warren, and a number of, can't think of the lady now, Parks, Rosa Parks. There's about five panels there, and they are very well-done. So if you get a chance, look at those pictures on Facebook or go by and see them. We've done two, we're trying to figure out what, what else might we want to do there, but this was all paid for through grants. So they, they really look good.
Good evening. I just wanted to start and take a minute. I want to brag about the city's tree board and Riley Sane. He has come to us multiple times with a passion and a love for planting new trees in the city of Clinton. If you don't know, the tree board really exists because of him as a teacher at Clinton High School, who brought some kids to really research and make that happen. So we've partnered with him multiple times now to get some grants, to plant some new trees in the city, but he really does all the work. So he just does it through us. So I just, I wanted to take a minute and talk about that, because last week, we planted 30 new trees at the Carden Farms Dog Park, so all the dogs can, and the, and the owners can have a little bit more shade, hopefully this summer. But the dog park is just a really great asset that the city took on and built and took charge of, and so we're happy to have a small part in that. I left you the VIP Knoxville magazine with a community spotlight on Clinton. It's about 13 pages, and it highlights different parts of Clinton, Clinton at Christmas time, and Terrapin Hill, and the work that we're doing there with our students, with our Clinton High School students and some Clinton City Schools kids. So I've reported multiple times on the art installation that we're still hoping to have done by the end of the year, that will be going in there, and the cherry trees that should be planted in the next few weeks. And then we also received a $5,000 grant from the Tennessee Arts Commission to do a storybook trail there, and I sent it to you. I don't know if you've had time to read it, but my dad wrote a children's book that will go along the storybook trail, and it, it tells the history of Clinton through the perspective of the turtle dance there. So we're just hoping that that is, you know, taking an underutilized city property and enhancing it, hopefully for our kids in the community. And then lastly, Saturday is the Clinton Christmas Parade, and we're really excited about it. In working with Anderson County Tourism, we learned that 9,700 people came to the Christmas parade last year, and there are only 10,000 residents in the city of Clinton. So some things that we know from those numbers is that there are a lot of people traveling here just for the parade. So we wanted to make it a little bit better this year, so that if that's the only time people are coming to Clinton, we make them want to come back. So at 6:00, we will, the courthouse is going to have some chimes that start, they're going to be custom Christmas chimes, and then we have a light projection that will go onto the courthouse to open the parade. Dream Dance Studios is going to do a Rocket-inspired dance performance right there, and then we're going to make it snow on Market and Main Street, so we've got some snow machines. So I'd encourage you to come and be part of the parade. It's going to be a really great, fun time to kick off the Christmas season, and if you can get to where you can see the courthouse, it's going to be extra special right there.
Any questions for Catherine? Thank you.
Thank you.
General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a reminder, the December council meeting will be held on Friday, December 15th at 1:00, which will follow the Christmas. Employee lunch will be at 11:30 at the community center. Just a couple of updates, which y'all had the special call meeting while I was out of town on the pool splash pad project. We're still waiting on the final notice to proceed on the contracts, which we're hoping to get this week, but we've kind of set a timeline that we hope to get started, as I said, hopefully this week on construction. We've set a completion date with all three contractors for May 15th, 2024, so that's when we're hoping to be completed. And we're hoping to be open by June 1 of next season. So that's kind of our goal for that project. Ridgeview Drive traffic study and recommendations, we did get that in late Wednesday before the holiday break. We have not had time to review that yet, so we'll try within the next meeting, council meeting or two, come back with some recommendations and provide you all that, that study and recommendations on that. General Government, with recent administrative staff changes, it is now necessary to appoint a new deputy city recorder. And according with, in accordance with the requirements of Article 4, Section 6 of the City of Clinton Charter, I would therefore appoint Paula Murray as deputy city recorder and request city council's approval of the appointment.
Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Paula, would you like to come up and say a couple of words? I'm joking. All in favor, say aye.
She's a great employee, I'll tell you that.
She is. She's a blessing. She's a blessing, so. All opposed? Motion, motion passes. There you go now.
Paula is a good one.
She's a good.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think I finally got her, right?
Yeah.
She'll get me back.
Yes, she will. We have reviewed a request from Jim McBride to accept an existing roadway serving 1102 and 1106 Eagle Bun Road into the city street system. This roadway was constructed to county standards in 1976, but was not listed as a public street when the Eagle Bun area was annexed. Based on the review and inspection of the existing roadway, as well as inspection of existing conditions by our consulting engineers, we would recommend that this roadway be accepted into the city street system with the provision that Mr. McBride dedicate additional right-of-way sufficient enough for the construction of a turnaround at the end of the roadway and install the stone-based material for this turnaround. The name of the existing street will be turned later upon the review and approval by the 8911 Board.
Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'd assume you're going to abstain.
I will abstain.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. In August 2019, the city council approved a long-term lease of property in the Carden Farm Industrial Park to Anderson County for the purpose of constructing and operating an animal shelter. It has been, it has been determined to qualify for this USDA facility loan in the amount of 5.9 million the county must own this property. Therefore, I would recommend the transfer of this property to Anderson County with the stipulations that it be used only for an animal shelter slash clinic. Construction must begin within five years of the date of the closing, and the, and if the county ever ceases to use the animal shelter, the property will revert back to the city of Clinton.
How many, how many acres is that?
4.5, Bill?
Yeah, it's a little under 5.
Yeah, 4.5 or 4.9, I'd have to go back and look.
So what's the cost? What's the, what's the value? Yeah, that's my next question.
The last industrial property we sold was at I-75, and I think we sold it at 15,000 an acre.
So it's worth about 67,000.
Sixty, seventy thousand dollars.
Mayor, I make a motion, we postpone this for 30 days, and we take it back up in, at the December meeting, and we'll see what happens at County Commission with some other things that's going on with us. I read the mayor's letter and, you know, that we're supposed to be cooperating and get along with each other. I, I don't know that that's actually happening. It's happening on our end, and we're going to give them a piece of property that's worth, what, 75,000 or close to it, 60, something? So it's not happening on their end, so I make a motion, we postpone it for 30 days.
Let me get a clarifying, because, because we're, we're having a meeting early, so it won't be 30 days, it'd be more, you want to clarify it'd be the December council meeting?
December council, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
That's fine. You have a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would also like to look at, I think, if I'm not mistaken, when the city takes an animal to the shelter.
Yes.
There's a fee associated with that. And can we look at a proposal or look at some changes regarding possibly even those structured, that fee structure? I mean, basically, we're asking the citizens of Clinton to give land to the county, but what is the county, I guess, what are we getting in return? So I mean, is those fees, or what do we, how do we, how do, how do I word that, like, yeah, we will entertain this upon this condition or that condition? What are, for the benefit of our citizens and the benefit of the city of Clinton?
What are we getting back?
What are we getting?
What do we spend now for fees over there? Do we know what we?
It's, it's based on, depending on what different services. I can, I can go back and pull that contract and, and, and provide counsel with a copy of it, and the next month's packet, and, and maybe even provide, I know Mayor Burton had attended the last commission meeting and had me prepare him a, I guess, a fact sheet of kind of some of the services we provide the county, and maybe I can provide that to all counsel before the next meeting also.
So what are some of the services, just top line?
I didn't bring that with me.
Police and fire to AC.
Police and fire, we provide, we had an agreement back, and I don't remember what year it was, 2012, 2013? year it was, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, when Andersonville Fire Department went, was trying to do the subscription. They'd actually sent Anderson County High School a bill for the service. So at the time, I think Larry Foster was director of schools, sent a request to Chief Brummett and myself. I wanted to know if we could do, do first response to Anderson County High School so they wouldn't have to pay the subscription. So we did a interlocal governmental agreement with them, and since then, we've been providing first, first response, not mutual aid, first response, fire, and EMS to Anderson County High School.
And the jail.
Well, the jail, we've been doing, I don't know when we started it, we've been doing that since I was, since before I was city manager. So we actually provide that service to both Anderson County High School and the jail. And of course, we do that as a first responder, not as a mutual aid, at no cost to the county. I know when we had the deal that came up a couple of months ago with the paving of J D Arnoldale, I had Chief Little go back and look. And at that time, and it's been six months ago or so, and I know we've had, or two months ago, I know we've had some, some other runs since then, we're probably, in the last twelve to fourteen months, we probably ran over sixty times to those two facilities. Now, you know, and that's.
As a first responder?
As a first responder, not a mutual aid, as a first responder.
So what's that annual savings? Would you?
You know, it's hard to put a dollar figure to that, because if you run EMS, you know, usually it's just one truck. But if you run a fire call to either one of them, if any fire call, we have to run, because we're a small department with just nine men per shift, we have to run every apparatus we got. So we're taking four trucks, all three rescue pumpers and the aero truck. So you're running four trucks. And that's where, you know, it's become, and I know myself and Councilman McBride had this conversation last week, it's become somewhat of a concern, especially at Anderson County High School, that if you run four vehicles up there on a, on a fire call, which it doesn't happen as much up there as it does the jail, and, and we've got all four pieces of our equipment up there, and then we had a call in South Clinton, or Mariner Point, which is two feathers points away, and then that becomes a concern, because then you've got to run all the way back to town.
And what sparked my conversation was what's been going on in Knoxville with AMR and the response time. You know, basically, the complaint has been there, you know, ridiculous, the people feel unfair and ridiculous response times. And so my, my question is, is by doing these type of response, I mean, what's happening to the people on Pine Street or Eagle Bend or everywhere else? I mean, are we adding three and four and five minutes of response time? And so that's something to be concerned about.
When's the MOUs, when does the MOUs run out?
Well, basically, I, you know, I got to look, and I don't even think we have one with the jail. I couldn't find one. So that's something which, which working with PE Partners and Bill is attending, Chief's attending, JB has, Chief Little had to leave. That's one thing that some of the laws have changed in, in working with PE Partners. And we just had a meeting with two of our representatives three weeks ago. They're wanting us to update all of our local, they're not calling them MOUs anymore, they're calling them interlocal governmental agreements. They're wanting us to update all of those now. So we're in the process, Chief Becker and Chief Little, both are in the process of doing those. So we've got to do one. If we, if we stay with the jail, we've got to do one. But we do have one with the schools. It's up April one. But in that agreement, we have to notify them ninety days prior. So, so we've got to January, yes, January one to decide on that one.
Roger, the jail one is logistic, logistically doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The ambulance service is right next to the jail.
Close to the wheel.
But then we respond as first responders. That just doesn't make sense if you look at streets.
True.
I'd be willing to bet money that the fire department gets there before the ambulance gets there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's always.
We need to know what his value is to be good partners, I think.
And we could go back, I wonder if there's a document somewhere about the Andersonville thing when Dr. Parrott was there. You know, like, what was Andersonville's subscription price? And then take that and multiply that by ten, because it'd been ten years. That would be a very.
There's so much.
Very fair, but I mean, that would probably be a low estimate of the value. So again, it's all about partnership.
Yeah.
And I want to make that clear. The partnerships are gives and takes, not always taken, not always given. There's give and take.
Do I need to add that to the motion that we discussed, that we put that on the agenda in December also? The, understand it with the jail and the school?
I think, I think.
We just bring it up.
Yeah, we'll have.
Okay.
Because it's not actually, I don't know that.
Okay.
Certainly is a point. But, you know, without getting too much into it, I'll echo what David and Jim both said, is we just need to know with this new commission, we, you know, and I was telling somebody today, I've always bragged, and I think Jim has too, and Larry, we've been here longer. But the great relationships we have with every other entity of our school system, both city and county, or city, or county commission, any local government C U B, we've had, I mean, that's, that's how you get things done. Now, this new commission, they, for what Rob said, we just got to make it a point is, do we want to partner? They want to partner. If they don't, then, then, then that's fine. But we need to know if they are going to be a partner with us. And if not, then we need to do our thing, they can do their thing.
And we've partnered with Lake City when we gave them our retired fire truck. And tonight on the agenda, we are.
We give them something?
We are going to give them a leaf. So I mean, we're, we're fine with partnering.
And I think the animal shelter thing, I think it's, I think it, in the long run, I think it's a good thing for us too, in the long run, because we're going to use it. And I think it, I think the shelter they've got now is inadequate. And I think this would be a good, good facility for us.
It'd be a good opportunity to partner.
Yes.
Exactly. So one other thing, I don't see anybody from the county in the audience tonight to come to the podium. They sent us a letter, just like Roger sent a letter requesting for traffic signals. And they blasted us for not having somebody there in person.
The county mayor did ask David, and I told her she needed to come.
Well, there's, maybe she needs to come. Maybe she ought to show up the next time. If they're gonna blast us for it, that's just how I feel. It's not a partnership with us. I have no problem with the dog, with the dog shelter. I'd vote for it in a heartbeat. But I think the way we're being treated, I'd go right back to them.
Roger, let me ask you a question. It just popped in my mind. I remember several years ago when we were evaluating response times on the fire department.
Yes.
It dramatically affected insurance rates for our constituents.
Yes.
And if we've got four fire trucks at Anderson County.
For free.
For free. And, and they have, there's a fire at Mariner Point. Is that potentially going to create insurance rate problem?
It possibly could. I mean, and then the big thing, and I'm sure it's going to come up, the master settlement, and should we, we supposed to have a fire hall up there? Well, the master settlement said it never put a timetable. And at some point, we will put one up there. And that's, that's coming sooner than, sooner than later. But once again, we're talking about running to a facility that's outside our city limits versus one running inside our city.
Even if we had a, even if we had a facility there, we still technically are responding to a county property. It's not city property. Yeah, even, even if you had.
And even if we did, even if we dropped an MOU for first response to these facilities.
We're going to do mutual aid.
Yes. In reality, if either one of them caught on fire or had a major issue, we would probably still be the first responding unit, because they would have to call us for mutual aid, and we would still respond.
But in that event, we would call in extra people if we had to and fight the fire. Our constituents or our citizens wouldn't be.
No.
Neglected for that time.
Let's, let's move on.
Okay.
I think very good discussion. I think we made our point.
So did we.
We voted in on the motion to post.
Any further discussion?
Next council meeting.
Did we get a second?
I did.
Yeah. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, thanks for that reminder.
Defer to Chris for finance report.
So, monthly financial report, we're a quarter of the way through the fiscal year. Revenues are trending as, as we expect. The expenditures, you guys know that we bought a fire truck and, and a few police cars in this first quarter. So, you know, that's above our, our revenue, but that was to be expected. We have reserves planned for that. So we're in good shape there. We're, we're at twelve point nine if the year ended now in, in fund balance. Of course, that would be down because we spent more than we've taken in, but that will change drastically starting in December with property tax. I'll go over to local option sales tax. I've given you guys the, the history there in the last, last few years. You may have noticed that we're down, and the biggest reason for that, the reason for that is the, I guess you'd call a tax holiday on, on food. Just to give you an example of how it's been affected, the month before this, the state collected sixty-four point nine million in sales tax on food this past month, thirty-eight point four. So you can see why we're down maybe twenty-two thousand overall. That's how it has affected the city of Clinton. That ended at the end of October, so we should see that coming back up. You won't see that in the report next month, because we're always lagging behind with what the state, the information the state gives us. So are there any questions on the finance report or the sales tax information?
Any questions for Chris?
Good job. Let me back up. I definitely forget to report on a couple of things. Paving. We finished J D Arnoldale Parkway a week and a half ago, so it's paved. They started today milling Mariner Point Drive. Hope to start paving tomorrow, and they hope to be done by Thursday before the rain comes in. They are a little concerned now that it's supposed to be twenty-one degrees Wednesday morning. So that may affect them. They may not be able to pave till it, till it gets a little warmer Wednesday.
Old Jew horses are.
You have anything else, Ross?
Yeah, I just, I forgot to.
Thanks, Chris.
I've got a budget amendment.
Oh, there you go.
So this will be the, the first budget amendment of the, of the fiscal year for us. You'll see, I'm cleaning up a whole lot of codes. A lot of it is our three or four lines of insurances where, you know, we budget for it, and then the bill comes in, and this one's higher, this one's lower. Just straightening that up. I'm putting money from the reserves into the bigger expenditures, the capital expenditures that we've had with the vehicles, fire truck, and all that. We've done some things in planning and zoning, updating, you know, coming up to date with our GIS and stuff. So you'll see those expenditures in there. And I'm pulling from the appropriate reserves or increasing revenue. Some of the cars were, were state grant money, so that was good. And then we're, we're pulling six hundred eighty-two thousand from our capital projects fund, and we're, or not fund, but reserve, and a hundred and one thousand from our unassigned fund balance. But again, this is me straightening up codes so that we feel good about where we are, just realigning and starting fresh for the second, third, third of the year.
Hear a motion for approval of budget number one?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Still a roll call on that, Chris.
Yes. Councilmember Queener?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Harold?
Yes.
Councilmember Gann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Manus?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Budget amendment number one passes. Anything else, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you again for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Based on council's directives, we have asked our traffic engineer to modify the Knox County policy we previously reviewed to reflect our needs. I've brought you a copy of the Knox County policy for reference. If there's anything you would like to see revised or changed, please let us know within the next few, next few weeks. We plan to present the final policy version for council's review in the January meeting. This is for the traffic colony.
Can you kind of summarize what the?
Well, and I don't have it.
Let's summarize it in December.
Okay.
When we have a chance, man, before we're discussing. I haven't looked at it really. Take a look at it, Ben.
Surplus leaf vacuum. We have removed the fallen equipment from service, and we requested it be declared surplus and transferred to the city of Rocky Top in accordance with TCA purchasing guidelines. It's a nineteen ninety-nine Perkins leaf vacuum, Public Works sixty-eight VIN nine zero six zero eight U zero zero one zero. It's one of the old pull behind leaf machines that we used to have a box. We don't even have the box anymore to shoot it in. And according to Wayne, it's kind of sitting in the way. So Rocky Top was in need of one. So.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? One thing I'd like to add on that, but going back to our previous discussion, I'd like, when we do, do these partnering, you know, for example, we need to send a letter to our, the commissioners that represent that area and copy the Mayor Frank or the county mayor, and just, again, and keep that in the file. I mean, there's little things that we do that add to a lot of, some big things that go unnoticed a lot of times, just for them to know that, you know, we are partnering with the county and all the, the other cities in the county, too. Just a suggestion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So I have, Mayor.
You were going to talk about the traffic study on Ridge, Ridgeview.
I brought it up. Well, did I bring it up?
Yeah.
I must have been looking at my notes.
We've got it. I just haven't reviewed it yet. So we'll, we'll bring it up next meeting.
Okay, great. Any questions for Roger? Thanks, Roger. Under readings and new ordinances, ordinance number six eighty-two, this is a meaning ordinance number six eighty, zoning code of the city of Clinton, Tennessee. Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Matt, you want to just highlight that at all, or just talk a little bit about it? Just the, just the, don't get too deep.
It's essentially taking our zoning ordinance, it was sort of over the map on, on submittal of documents for planning commission and zoning and signs and telecommunications towers, et cetera, and aligning them from a fourteen to a twenty-one day submittal period, which allows more time for developers to finalize their plats after, before the, before the final approval at planning commission, and also for staff as well. Our current ordinance is ten days in some place, fourteen days is in other places. So we proposed to bring them all to twenty-one days and, and treat everything universally that way. And that's the bulk of the approvals. Let's see that. And the other big thing was, which I, I think was quite a smart move, is the RV parks and, and permanent parking for, for recreational vehicles for long-term rentals was moved, is being proposed to be moved out of B two zone and into a more appropriate area of B four zone, which is out next to the interstate, as opposed to in front of neighborhoods that probably shouldn't have RV parks in front of them. So, and that was in response to, of course, citizen outcry and, and consistency with the, with the remaining portion of our, our zoning ordinance.
Thanks, Matt. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Queener?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Harold?
Yes.
Councilmember Gann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Manus?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six eighty-two passes on first of two readings. Under resolutions, resolution number eight thirty-four, this is the LPRF grant amendment for the J C Pool. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roger?
It's just a budget amendment. We're not sure that we need it, but with other, since we're trying to get this thing going, JB's wanting to hurry up and get construction started, with other, we'll go ahead and get it passed now in case they come back and ask for it. And we're, we're, we're a couple of weeks. JB is shovel ready.
He's shovel ready.
He looks shovel ready.
That's good.
That ground's cold.
Any more, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Harold?
Yes.
Councilmember Gann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Manus?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Resolution number eight thirty-four passes.
Poor JB.
Resolution number eight thirty-five, this is the C U B in lieu of tax payments for the fiscal year ending six thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
How much?
Is one point, was it one point five?
A little more than that.
One point five.
It was actually a couple a little bit from last year.
Yeah.
Almost one point six.
One point five eight five, two nine one third.
I saw Greg Faye today. I thanked him. Invited him to Christmas lunch.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Queener?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Harold?
Yes.
Councilmember Gann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Manus?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Resolution number eight thirty-five passes. Any old business before us?
I have a question for Roger. Roger, what'd you find out on my house down on Riverside?
We, they inspected it and actually cited him to city court. And he went to court two weeks ago? No, last week. Last week, and the judge gave him till.
He gave him thirty days to get it in compliance or else he starts to.
Yep.
Compliance being, meaning what?
Passes, he, he had to get his permit, which he did. And he has to get progressive inspections.
uh, within 30 days, uh, work, uh, uh, repairing the outside. And then I could work with him on the interior to, uh, you know, for as long as the permit is a good for.
That also includes cleaning it up, straightening it up. The only thing I can see that he's done so far is moved the trailer.
Yes, I, I'm aware of that. And, and so.
That's it.
We are on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other old business? Any new business? Motion adjourned? So moved.